Okay. Welcome, everyone. I call the April 4th City Council meeting to order. Mayor Polly has an excused absence tonight, so I will be serving as Mayor Protam. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may participate in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Special Bit Business. So ID 1060, we've got National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week proclamation. So tonight I'll be issuing the proclamation on behalf of Mayor Polly. However, I'm going to do this as a part of the second item on the agenda, which is ID 1071, the introduction of the Issaquah Police Department new hires. So I'd like to ask interim Chief Paula, Chief of Police Paula Schwan to, and the Issaquah Police Department dispatch staff who are here, to go up to the podium. And Chief Schwan is going to introduce the dispatch staff, who will then introduce themselves briefly so that we can get to know you guys.
Hello, I am Holly LeBron. I'm originally from South Carolina. My husband and I honeymooned in Seattle, and we just fell in love with Washington immediately. And inevitably, my entire family has followed me here, my brother, my mom. Having a baby will do that. I love Issaquah because it's beautiful and picturesque. It reminds me exactly, when I think of Washington, this is exactly what I think of is here. And I enjoy working for Issaquah, being a part of positive change and something bigger than myself. And fun fact, I have four dogs.
My name is Rachel Brown. I've been working for the city of Issaquah since October. I joined Issaquah because I really valued the commitment that the city had to its citizens. And a fun fact about myself is that I'm a single mom, and my kid loves to play in the parks here.
Hey, I'm Grace Ballage. I joined Issaquah just because how wonderful everybody was. I'm entry level, and this was kind of one of my first interviews I did, and just fell in love with the people and how wonderful everybody was. I'm originally from California, and fun fact about me is I love to travel.
Hi there, I'm Karina Keen. Born and raised in Anchorage, Alaska. I moved down to Washington to go to university where I met my husband. We have three sons and two Great Danes. I came to Issaquah following several other previous employees. I spent 12 years at Snohomish County dispatching there as well. I find, I was looking for an agency whose values more aligned with my own, and I found that in Issaquah. My goal is to be a catalyst in the rebuild and be a positive change moving forward. And my fun fact is that I've run a marathon.
Thank you, ladies. Mayor Protam now will give the proclamation as well as the swearing in.
Excellent. Let me move these things around. I'm not as tall as Mayor Polly is, so, yeah. So I know that we've got several other hires who are previous hires who weren't here tonight, so we will welcome them at that point. But this week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And so we have a proclamation, which I'm going to read and then give to the chief, and each of you will also get copies. So whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property; and whereas the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Issaquah Communications Center; and whereas professional public safety telecommunications are a vital link for our community and are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services; and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Issaquah Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals; and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim the week of April 10th to 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And so, Chief, I would like to give you this version, and then you've got versions to hand to your members. So at this time, we are going to swear in our staff. So I would ask our new hires to raise their right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Recognize this badge. As a symbol of public faith. And I accept it as a public trust to be held. So long as I am true to the ethics of this department. On my honor. I will never betray our badge. My integrity. My character. Or the public trust. I will always have the courage. To hold myself and others. Accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution. My community. And the Issaquah Police Department. Thank you, everyone. So at this time, let's see. We'd like to give the dispatch staff an opportunity to greet each of the council members at the dais, take a group photo, and then allow time for our guests to exit before we proceed with the rest of the meeting. So if there's no objection, I'll call for a short five-minute break. Hearing no objection, we'll stand at ease for five minutes. So if you would go ahead and join the members up there, you can say hello. Order. So the next item on the agenda is Audience Comments. Members of the public may address council at this time, either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you'll press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, you're going to look for the hand icon, which varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for the general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, Diana Schuetz has signed up to make comments tonight. Diana, in just a moment here, I'll make you a panelist. You should be able to unmute and then choose to turn your video on.
Hello. Thank you very much for inviting me. I wanted to appreciate the council's recognition of the Sexual Assault Awareness Month in partnership with the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. It's so important to the work that we do, that we have the support of our leadership in all of our municipalities. And so I appreciate that you are being intentional about recognizing this important activity and supporting all of us. I've been the vice president of the board here at KSARC for three years, and I can tell you that Issaquah is a good place to be knowing that we have your support and our community's support behind this important work.
Thank you, Diana. And Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak or indicating a desire to speak? I'm not sure if your mic is on or not. I don't know. Okay. Great. Okay. And let's see. I was going to see anybody in person want to make any comments? No? Okay. It looks like we're good. So we want to thank everyone who shows up and provides comments. But as a reminder, written comments are always able to be submitted at any time. You can email us at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And the next part of Audience Comments, I would usually summarize any email comments that we received on tonight's agenda item, but given we only have the one item, we have not received any emails on that since the last time we summarized comments. So the next item of business is Committee and Regional Reports. So Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. The LTAC Committee is working on the application for the Spring 2022 projects. And we're currently wordsmithing that. Our next meeting is May 20th for that. Also, the Cascade Water Alliance Board met on Wednesday, the 23rd. The mayor attended. I did not attend, so we'll have to circle back with the mayor to get some notes on that meeting. But we'll fill you in on that. I did send out a newsletter that was sent to us by the staff. If you have questions about that, let me know. And after you hear the mayor's report, if you have any questions, of course, we would be happy to answer those. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. Very briefly, the Healthier Here Governing Board will hold a meeting this Thursday afternoon. And Eastside Transportation Partnership will meet Friday morning. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I have one upcoming meeting and two reports. Upcoming meeting this Wednesday at April 6th at 3:00 p.m. There will be a RWQC Regional Water Quality Committee meeting, and the agenda includes briefings on the sewer rate, capacity, charge, status, and decennial flow monitoring conveyance system improvement programs. Then I have two reports. The Coconee ILA Management Committee met on March 23rd. Coconee is an endangered kind of salmon that spawns in Lake Simamish or around Lake Simamish. And there was a request at this meeting to fund an additional $50,000 in the inter-local agreement. So this would affect the city's budget. It affects the city's portion of the ILA by about $10,000. So this increases the amount that we would pay into the ILA from $35,000 annually to about $45,000 annually. This would support part of the Coconee Recovery Manager position, who chairs this meeting and who, I think, does an excellent job leading the work for Coconee Recovery. So I am generally supportive. We did, in the meeting, talk about needing to bring this to our councils since it does affect the budget. So wanted to let all of my fellow councilmembers know about this, but I will be supportive of that. And if you have any questions or comments for me, please let me know. I also wanted to report that we did see good signs that the work of this group is having an impact. In 2017, there were fewer than 20 Coconee returned to the creeks around Lake Simamish, so 20, 2-0. And this past year, the Coconee Work Group counted about 2,000. So this is a big increase, and this is really a good sign because they are a very endangered population, and salmon are so important to us in this region. I also wanted to let this group know that we also heard a presentation from Issaquah's Planning Manager Lucy Sloman on the dock lighting work that the city has been doing as part of Title 18. And Title 18 is our land use code update. And this presentation was very well-received by the group, and I just wanted to thank Lucy for presenting on this. Other cities will probably be able to use our work in their cities with, along Lake Simamish, to improve their dock lighting for salmon survival, which is great. The next meeting of the Coconee ILA Work Group has not been set, but will be in April. And then lastly, the Council Rules Ad Hoc Committee met on March 30th from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. This is the first of what will be two meetings that the ad hoc has. Councilmembers Ray, Martz, and I met, and we are the three members of the Council on Committee. We also met with City Administrator Bob Quitz and Clerk Grabowski and Clerk Geezer. And we made a number of recommendations, including that appointments will be, appointments for committees will be made by Council President. The committee chairs will serve on only one committee, and that leadership won't serve as standing committee chairs. These were summarized in an email that went out. And then this and other recommendations that we have will be formalized in the rules, and then we will review that at our next meeting, which will be Wednesday, April 6th. This will be the second and final planned committee meeting for this committee. So we will report back with our final recommendation after that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President. The next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will be held on April 14th at 4:00 p.m. at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. This meeting will be held in person, and the agenda has not been set at this time. Eastside Fire and Rescue is developing a strategic plan this year, and the process is going to involve a series of public meetings, the first of which is this Wednesday, April 6th, that will occur at Station 73, which is in the Issaquah Highlands. There will be a meeting on April 20th in North Bend, a meeting on April 13th in Carnation, a meeting on April 26th in Simamish, and a meeting on April 19th in Woodenville, and a meeting on April 27th in May Valley. Deputy Council President Hall, Councilmember Martz, and I will be attending the meeting this Wednesday at Station 73. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Protam, which sounds like a superhero title or supervillain. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting this Thursday from 10 until noon. There's an action item on the certification of Canyon Park RGC subarea. Should you have an opinion about that, feel free to share it with me. Although, as it's not in King County, I would be surprised if anyone has an opinion on that. There's also a certification of Snohomish County countywide planning policies and a bunch of discussion items. The SCA Public Issues Committee meeting is next Wednesday from 7 till 9 p.m. Bunch of stuff. Action on a PSRC Executive Board appointment, discussion of affordable housing countywide policies, hazardous waste management coordination, local actions on climate change, an update on solid waste and sewer rates, an update on regional transportation plan, a lot, a big juicy agenda this month in PEC. This concludes my report.
Wow, thank you. And Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. No report this evening.
Too easy. Okay. And for my report, I will attend the King County Affordable Housing Committee meeting on Thursday from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. It's a virtual meeting. And we are going to get the first overview of the accountability framework that we owe to the Growth Management Planning Council, GMPC. We'll discuss that. And then we also have a state legislative session wrap-up to hear about the bills related to affordable housing and which ones passed and didn't, and understanding the outcomes of that legislation. And so that concludes my report. The next item is the mayor's report, which I will also give. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per NI. The items are expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated following open session. This month, Mayor Polly signed a proclamation designating April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Issaquah. We can all take actions to make our community a safer place and to help victims heal from their trauma. Help is available for anyone who has experienced sexual abuse. The nonprofit King County Sexual Assault Resource Center operates a 24-hour resource line at 1-888-99-VOTE. That's V-O-I-C-E. Further resources can be found at kcsarc.org. Earlier this evening, we heard KSARC's Board Vice President Diana Schutz to acknowledge the proclamation. And so we want to thank Diana and KSARC for your work to make our community a safer place. Next, the Lifetime Achievement Award Proclamation. The city of Issaquah partnered with the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce to present the 2021 Lifetime Achievement Award. This award recognizes individuals who have made a significant contribution to our community through leadership, service, economic growth, and sustainability. The 2021 Award winner is Rob Hunt. Since 1979, Rob has worked tirelessly to grow village theater and make it into the cultural and artistic powerhouse that it is today. Issaquah's economic vitality and downtown core has been greatly enhanced by Rob's career of service. So please join me in honoring him and thanking Rob Hunt. Last week, the city of Issaquah also presented its Hall of Fame Award to former City Councilmember Stacy Goodman and former Issaquah History Museum Executive Director Erica Manas. Please join me in congratulating these award winners and thanking them for their many years of service to our community. Next, the 2022 Down Home, 4th of July. So we're delighted to announce that this year, the Down Home 4th of July Parade and Family Activities are back. So mark your calendars for the parade and family fun on the 4th of July from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We've got a few upcoming community events. The Cascade Gardener Spring Series, Heavenly H Plants. Cascade Water Alliance is sponsoring a free webinar on April 9th at 10:00 a.m. Participants will learn more about growing hydrangeas, hellebores, and hoocheras, I should have read this ahead of time, from Marianne Benati, a Northwest Horticulture expert. Registration is free, but required through brown paper tickets. The Issaquah Wine and Art Walk. The Art Walk is back on April 15th. Join the Downtown Issaquah Association to sip, stroll, and shop around Old Towns Galleries, boutiques, and businesses. You can purchase your tickets in advance. It's $30 for 10 tasting tokens, one token per taste, or at the door for $40. Wine tasting participants must be 21 or older. Details and registration can be found on the city's website. And keep Issaquah a beautiful day. Join us on Saturday, April 23rd, as we work to keep our favorite town clean and beautiful. Rain or shine, volunteers will help pick up trash, maintain vegetation, and plant flowers. Afterwards, participants will enjoy live music and pizza at the historic Shell Station. Learn more on the Downtown Issaquah Association's website. The Farm Fresh Market. The Downtown Issaquah Association is hosting a market with seasonal flowers and foods at the historic Shell Station. The event will run Saturdays through April 30th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And finally, City Hall is currently open to the public Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's anticipated that open hours will resume Monday through Friday schedule beginning April 11th. And that concludes the mayor's report. The next item of business is the Consent Calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Okay. And is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's agenda packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. My mic went off. Those opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item of business is Regular Business, AB 8363, Amendments to IMC 5.02 Business Licenses. This item was last before council at the March 29th Council Study Session. And I'd like to invite City Attorney Rachel Bender Turpin to introduce this item. Rachel.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay. My power went out shortly before the My power went out shortly before the meeting, so I am working off of my phone hotspot. So let me know if you need me to repeat myself, but I'm here attached to my phone audio, so I think that'll be a little bit better.
We can hear you just fine, Rachel. Thank you.
Okay, well, if I'm going in and out, because I'm sitting in the dark here, so that's why I have half of a head, so, yes, I have my little lamp here. But anyway, I can still guide you through this because I've worked a lot on it, so I know it well, and I have it in front of me. As we discussed at the city council study session last Tuesday, the 29th, this is a complete overhaul of Chapter 5.02 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, which sets forth the general regulations for the city's general business licenses. The city uses the state's business licensing services to regulate business licenses, or I guess regulate isn't exactly the right word, but to process business license applications. In other words, when folks go to apply for a business license, they essentially use the same portal that they do to get their state business license, but they request an endorsement that gives them a City of Issaquah business license in addition to the state business license requirement. The state then sends their application to the city to review and for the city to essentially sign off on for the state BLS. And then the city, of course, can set its own fees and have its own criteria for how to review applicants for licenses. The old chapter hadn't been updated in quite some time. A lot of it had been written in the mid or early 80s, and it hadn't been updated thoroughly since the city switched to the BLS system around 2019. There were certain parts that were required to be updated, and those portions had been done properly, but there were some areas in the code where it reflected old processes. For instance, paper applications that the city no longer uses, temporary licenses that are actually not available through BLS, and so the city hasn't been issuing those for several years. So we wanted to make sure that we were actually, we had a code that really reflected what the processes are that the city currently uses. And while we did that, we also looked at the revocation and suspension criteria more closely, following our conversation in January regarding the amendments to those criteria that were made then. As the council and community may recall, when those amendments were adopted in January, they were adopted with a sunset provision that means that the ordinance and those amendments expire on April 18th, so coming up soon. And so unless the council adopts new regulations prior to that date, the code will revert to how it was written prior to then. So we worked extensively, myself and Jen Davis Hayes in economic development, with the business community and as well as staff who administer this code, to find a code that would be workable for staff, but that would also be more appealing to the business community. We had several meetings with the Economic Vitality Commission. We received input from the Chamber of Commerce, and we then received more input from the city council at the study session, and that input was taken into account in the drafting of the version that is in front of you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
Thank you, Rachel. Does council have any questions? Okay, councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I had a question about the rental properties part of the business license code, so this is something that we talked about at the study session, which was that we have an exemption for any residential rental or leasing activity which does not involve more than nine residential units at any one location with the city. So first of all, I wanted to ask you about if you had a chance to look at what other cities' codes do for this, and how does our code compare?
Yes, I actually looked very extensively at what other cities do, and there are very few cities that have any form of exemption, actually. I found that Renton, Renton has an exemption for rental units that are registered through their rental licensing program, so they have a separate rental registration and inspection program, so a totally separate rental housing licensing program, like some jurisdictions have implemented. And so if a unit has already been kind of permitted through that, that takes the place of the business license requirement, essentially, so that they don't require a separate business license then. Redmond exempts four units or fewer from the requirement to have a business license, those are residential units. And then Maple Valley has some strange language. It says it exempts persons whose sole activity is the rental of real property. I don't think that's very great drafting, but I can only assume that means that their sole activity in the city of Maple Valley is rental activity, not that that's their sole occupation, period. It's not exactly the wording I would have used, but I think that's what it means. So I think that I would interpret that to be a blanket exemption for rental activity as long as that's all you do, but once again, it's kind of hard to tell because that language isn't really very clear. But other than that, I did not see any other cities, and I looked at Seattle, Bellevue, Snohomie, Sumamish, Kirkland, Boswell. Let's see, I have wrote them all down here, too. There were, I looked at quite a few. Newcastle was another one. Yeah, I looked at pretty much everyone that was kind of in our general area, and nobody else did. Those are the only three.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that research. And my other question was, the way I read the exemption, you could have an unlimited number of residential units within the city, as long as they aren't nine, more than nine at any one spot in the city, any one location in the city. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. That is correct, and that just comes directly from the existing code.
Okay, and does location here mean one address?
Yes, that is what the intent is, to mean the one address. They actually use contiguous parcels or parcel or contiguous parcels in the existing code, but I didn't like that because I think that becomes, it gets a little bit, I think that can get a little bit too broad. An address can actually encompass multiple parcels, so I thought that that made more sense to use rather than, you know, multiple parcels which could start to kind of get carried away.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my question is, I understand that this wasn't the main, this exemption came up as something that's different than most of our neighboring cities, but it wasn't the purpose of this particular review, it was just something that we found, so I wondered if you could give me a sense of how we might address this issue, perhaps get feedback on it, and revisit this particular part of the code to, if we were to consider making changes to this, what that timeline could look like.
Yeah, actually, I do have a recommendation for that. So when this came up, I brought this up at the Economic Vitality Commission, and there was really mixed feedback on it. Some folks felt like we should just, I'd say in general, they kind of just didn't want to touch it and wanted to defer to council, which is why I really just left it the way it is and deferred to the council on it. But there seemed to be a sense that short-term rentals at least should be included. However, the reasoning for the inclusion of the short-term rentals was to be able to control the behavior of short-term rentals. And the problem with that is that a business license alone is not going to have that effect. If the city wants to regulate short-term rentals, it's going to have to do that through separate short-term rental regulations, which is a topic that has already come up in community planning and development. So I think that the city should look at short-term rental regulations in the future, whether it's as part of Title 18 or as a separate project either contemporaneously with or shortly thereafter, and that you should address this whole topic of rentals at that time because you will want to make some changes to the business licensing code, depending on what you decide to do with short-term rentals, but it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to mess around too much with the business license code until you figure out what you want to do with short-term rentals, because what will happen is residents will be upset because they will want you to be able to do more with the business license and to be able to take action against these short-term rentals, but you really won't be, you won't have any means to unless you have regulations that they are supposed to follow, and they are not.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. Thank you. That's the end of my questions, but the very thorough answers. Thanks.
Okay, do we have any other council questions at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number... repealing and replacing Chapter 5.02 of the Issaquah Municipal Code Regarding City Business Licenses.
Second.
Thank you. Is there, the motion to adopt ordinance number 2972, repealing and replacing Chapter 5.02 of the Issaquah Municipal Code Regarding City Business Licenses, has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, again, I want to thank our city attorney, Rachel, councilmember Joe, our economic development manager, Jen, the Economic Vitality Commission, and our business community for coming together to update this chapter of our code with readability and public safety in mind. I think that this update gets us what we want, which is, you know, a mechanism to manage public safety issues that can't already be addressed through or resolved through collaboration. And of course, just to reiterate, our first step when issues like this arise will always be to connect and problem solve directly with our businesses. I'm definitely pleased with how this turned out, but given some additional feedback from the chamber and the Downtown Issaquah Association, I'm offering a small amendment after, and I'll offer that after some initial comments from council this evening, and that amendment would simply change the amount of time businesses can file an appeal after they've received an official notice from 10 days to 14 days, so a full two weeks. And that language has been shared with you all, and I think there's a paper copy in front of you as well. With that, I will be supporting this motion tonight, and those are my comments. Thanks.
Any other comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I agree with all of the comments by Deputy Council President Hall, and on the specific issue of the rental properties, I think anytime we're looking at code and do come across some part of the code that, in this case, it doesn't align with our neighboring cities, and there are potential issues with the existing code that have been flagged by our city attorney, I think it is best practice to make sure that we put a timeframe on when we're going to revisit it, even if it isn't exactly tonight, because we don't have enough feedback or information about what all would be in that process of updating in a more holistic way, as city attorney Turpin described, looking at the regulations more broadly for rentals. So I would urge council to consider this as part of the work plan to make sure that we do revisit the rental issue. Aside from that, I agree with all of the previous comments about, you know, thank you to the commissions and thank you to the business community who provided feedback that I think really strengthened this code.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just chime in real quickly to say, I think this was a very smooth process and something where we brought together quite a few elements from the commissions to the business community, staff members who are involved in all of the process, and really just all worked together with a goal of making something better, easier to use. And so I do appreciate identifying some key areas that we want to follow up on, but to get a whole section of code rewritten in a way that everyone, checks everyone's boxes in under 90 days is impressive and deserves kudos and really shows what we can accomplish as a group, so I will definitely be supporting this. And any other comments? Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you. Then I'll make my underlying, or motion to the underlying motion, which is I move to amend Section 5.02.140, notification of suspension, revocation, or denial of the ordinance to strike 10 in both instances and insert 14, and amend subsection 5.02.150 C, time and place to appeal, appeal fee, to strike 10 and insert 14.
Second.
Thank you. The amendment has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Any council discussion? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I appreciate the extension of time to 14 days. As many of you know, I used to be a code review attorney for a local code publishing company, and when I reviewed the codes, I often wanted to make sure that there was adequate time for due process so the businesses could actually get the notice, talk to council if needed, and respond in a thoughtful way. It also gives the city a little bit more time to negotiate with the business owner to try to reach a conclusion without having to go to an appeal, so I'm fully in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments or discussion? Okay, and so making sure our next order there is to ask for a vote, and are we okay for a verbal vote? Okay, I'll, let's see, I should probably read the proposed amendment again. So the motion on the table is the amendment to Section 5.02.140, notification of suspension, revocation, or denial of the ordinance to strike 10 in both instances and insert 14, and amend subsection 5.02.150, paren C, time and place to appeal, appeal fee, to strike 10 and insert 14. And the motion is on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Goes off again. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. So that was, we now have an amended motion, and so if there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 2972, as amended, repealing and replacing Chapter 5.02 of the Issaquah Municipal Code Regarding City Business License. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Got it? Those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. And the next item of business is good of the order, and I think we've got a few items on good of the order tonight. I guess we can say thank you to Rachel so that she can enjoy her time in the dark. Okay, oh, that's right, she is coming back for later. So anything for good of the order? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I had a question for the administration, which is around, during our last ad hoc committee meeting, one of the things that we discussed was the connection between committees, and so council committees doing our work and the volunteer commissions, which are a really important part of the work that we do, and which we have several volunteer commissions that support different aspects of city business. And that got me thinking about commissions, and one of the commissions will be, is in the work plan to be sunsetted this year, which is the Cable TV Commission, and so I wanted to ask... to be sunsetted this year, which is the Cable TV Commission. And so I wanted to ask the administration about what the process is for the city council to be involved in that decision-making, and also what are, how we can be involved in thanking this commission and making sure that they're sunset in a way that respects the hard work that they've done.
City Administrator Bob Quitz?
Good evening, everyone. Council President, Councilmember Hunt. It is in the work plan. We have been waiting for the committee structure to take hold, so we're on track to do that May 1. So the tentatively titled, I think, Parks Services and Safety Committee, or Services Safety and Parks Committee, will put that on their agenda here probably in the next 60, 90 days.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other items for Good of the Order? No? Okay. I've just got a few or one item, just to remind everyone, if you haven't already, to reply to the Committee Preferences Survey. I believe that's due on Wednesday, so that we can get all of our planning ready, so that we are then ready with the assignments when we pass that or when we look through the Ad Hoc Recommendations Report. Okay. And then a few other items there. We've got upcoming council meetings. April 12th, we've got a special study session. On the agenda is the Amendments to Title 16 Regarding the Stormwater Manual and Floodplain Code, the Biennial Budget, and the Munis Update. April 18th, we've got a regular council meeting with potential agenda items, including the Council Rules of Procedure Ad Hoc Committee Report Out. And the next item of business is an executive session. As earlier announced, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.220, Pren. 1, Pren. I. The item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow. As a reminder, the executive sessions are closed to the public. So we will now recess into executive session at 7:54 PM. For those participating virtually, anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.